Yo, what up? Testing new stuff. I had a huge problem streaming yesterday on the streamer home game. Upload was screwed. I think I fixed the problem, so now I'm starting. And it's just interesting to see whether the stream quality is good or not. And it seems to be decent at the moment. I also have a new mic. I have no idea how this tabletop mic actually works. So I would appreciate any feedback if this is better than the headset or not. I don't even know if I like this tabletop more than a headset. But anyway, I'm just going to play with solver and probably bucket tool. I bought this solver to make some rough preflop sims. And there's good news and there's not so good news. The good news is that for 5 max simple preflop, it was pretty fast. Until I added glimpse and a couple of different sizings. And now it seems that the next sim for 5 max, when there's 3BB splash money. Actually, there's one week to run. And I lost my lucky chip. Oh, fuck. I can't stream without my chip. But it seems to be... There it is. Back! So now it seems that we're... I don't know why it's so long, but that's what I expected. These first two... You are here... I'm Lina. You will see the two sims I made. They were two days per each. And what I did is I wanted to see how does it affect our preflop tree betting if we say that opponents never fold to tree bets? Which is probably very true on PL 10 and over. Very often on PL 25. There are players who call tree bets with rainbow kings, ace, jack, 5-5 rainbow with any hand, because they want to hit the flops. So if you don't have any fold equity with tree bets, what happens to our tree betting range? And to do that, I made two sims. They are 5 max, because making a 6 max preflop sim would be just over my memory. And at the time of these two sims, I had only 128GB of RAM, because normal Windows doesn't support it anymore. Now I have the 256, so I could do it for 6 max at some point. But I made it for 5 max, makes it a bit quicker, easier. And the idea is that I have a 5 max here. 5 max preflop where preflop is either pot or fold, which is or call easy. And all the post-flop sizings are three quarters, so only 75 post-flop. And this is preflop sim. It calculates the post-flop, but we don't use this sim or I don't use to make any post-flop calculations. But it gives decent enough preflop ranges. If I add another sizing on post-flop, the tree would be too big for my computer to handle. So we have to make a lot of compromises. And the second one here is the same sim. Preflop only pot, fold or call, post-flop only three quarters. So all the same parameters, except there's no folding to tree bets. So we can see here like... From the tree, let's say UTG opens pot. And then there's a tree bet. Oh, now we... Middle position tree bets, everyone folds. Now his options are either to call or pot. You see here that calling 86% of times, four-betting 30% of times, no chance to fold. While on the sim on the left, on the same situation, we can see that there's 33% folds, 51 call and 15 four-bet. So he has a... UTG has a folding range. On the other sim, he doesn't. And all the parameters are exactly same, because then we can compare. So Shadow Maniac, what we are looking for is... I have two rough sims, 5 max PL, where on the first one, it's normal preflop. On the second one, you cannot fold to tree bets. Because I want to see what happens to solver strategy when opponents don't fold to tree bets or the solver doesn't fold to tree bets. But mainly to see how our tree betting range changes if opponents never fold to tree bet. That's the case on small stats very often. You have to assume that opponents call tree bets. They're calling with hands... I mean, the worst of the hands. Rainbow, pocket, kings. So I haven't seen any of this stuff. I mean, people have opinions. Okay, if opponent never fold to tree bet, we should tree bet more. Or we should tree bet with different ranges or whatever. I don't know. So I wanted to make the sim. And the general idea... What parameters? I said for everyone. In solver, you don't have villains. You just have five solver players. The parameters are pretty much for the second one that you cannot fold. If you open, you don't have folding option anymore. There might be some huge... I mean, the four-bets you can fold or if there's three bet and a lot of callers. You have to manually remove all the callers from the preflop tree. And it was quite painful. But pretty much if there's one tree better or there's a call and squeeze, at least in those spots, it doesn't fold. Not sure if there's a... If there's call... Oh, let's go back. Let's see. Pot, we have call, call, tree bet. Okay, now it can fold. Because I just removed the fold to tree bets when it's heads up or there's a squeeze. So the idea, at least what I think... I'm not a madam... Madam... Mada-ma-gician. Is that the word? Madam-ma-gician. I'm not really good in maths. I'm decent, but when we go to the true mathematics, then I can't say that I'm really good. But in my mind, and as far as I understand, if we want to compare two things, then the circumstances should be exactly same so we can compare. And that's the thing here with these sims. The post-flop is restricted only to 75% bets, which is a huge compromise. But both of those have the same parameters. So it doesn't matter. Both of them are 5 max. So I think the results will have some meaningfulness in them. But if the other sim was with different parameters or different settings, strength buckets and the extra, how accurate it is, if they would be different, then there would be problems to see what causes different results. But now everything else is same, except no folding to tree bets after opening. So what I have... I actually made an Excel sheet. And there's no really nice graphics yet. I thought about putting some colors and making it more professional. And then I thought, fuck it. I would do it later when I actually get more results and I'm more familiar running the solvers and so on and so on. But out of those two sims, here are the race first sims. And they are virtually the same. The right one is when you don't fold to tree bets. Which is quite weird that it opens a bit more. Probably because the tree betting ranges go down a little. So if no one folds to tree bets, then people will tree bet slightly less in solver strategy. In real life, that's not the true. And it would be really hard to make sims that focuses only on opponent likes. One player... Like one player could fold to tree bets and some others. Then we would need to do a different sim for each position setting. And that would be painful. But we can see that pretty much the race first team are the same. 21, 30, 50, 40. 22, 31, 51, 39.1. Small blind, exactly same, but virtually the same. And now understand that these sims are run through 10 iterations per node, which means that it's somewhat accurate. If the sim was better and I would like to get really good results, I would need to run it four or five times longer to make it very meaningful. So these are rough sketches. The stats don't change for heads up or three-way bets, but for some multi-way bets, the sims are not 100% accurate. But that's not a problem here, because we are pretty much looking just simple preflop stuff. Then tree betting. Cut-off tree bets... I mean, calling on tree betting. These numbers here, I hope you can see it. I don't have a zoom yet on the layout. 9.1/6 means that it calls 9.1% of times and tree bets 6% of times. And now we can start to compare. The left is when you can fold to tree bets. Right is when UTG cannot fold to tree bet. So we have here that calling range is 9.1, calling range is 9.4. Calling range has to be wider. But the tree bet range drops from 6 to 4.7. So it drops pretty much 20%, 1.3. So the first thing we see is that cut-off tree bets a bit less versus UTG. And that makes sense. Some of the worst tree betting hands count on having fold equity. Now when we don't have any fold equity, we tree bet less. And the same tendency goes on through here. Small blind or button calls versus UTG. Calls 15%, tree bets 6.2. No fold to tree bets. Calls 1% more, but tree bets 4.8. And pretty much the same tendency goes over to all the numbers. It calls slightly less, virtually the same, but it tree bet slightly less. And the thing is that if the tree bets drops from 5% to 4%, it's quite a lot. It's 20% of the tree betting hands. So it's 1/5 of your tree betting hands that you don't tree bet. So what I'm interested to see is does that bottom of tree betting range transfer to a calling range or are they just folds? And about squeezing. Button versus UTG open, cut-off call. Calling 8.8, squeezing 6.4. Calling 9.2, squeezing 6.5. So about the squeezing ranges, these are virtually the same. So if we want to make quick assumptions, when opponents overcall tree bets, our squeezing range doesn't change. Because probably in squeezing bets, the fold equity shouldn't be there or it shouldn't be that much anyway, because it's going to be three-way bet with dead money in the middle. But which is tree bets slightly less? And I'm quite surprised so far that the numbers don't change that much. Because on some situations, solver would like to fold to tree bets quite often. So here... UTG should fold to the cut-off tree bet 33% of times. So he has 33% fold equity. And people shouldn't code-call. Like here, button calls only 1.6, so he doesn't really call on tree bets. Our four-bet's only aces. So tree betting UTG from cut-off should have 33% fold equity. Now it doesn't have it. And still, the tree betting ranges are quite similar. But when we look at the tree bet ranges, then pretty much... It's very common on both that... Yeah, Shadow Maniac, I'm going to clip the second... Or on the next, I'm going to clip that that the percentage might be the same. So I'm going to see if the ranges are similar too or if there's very different ranges. Because I would expect that the ranges might change or they might not. I don't know. But so far for the percentage, I have thought people about 5-10 rule as a simplification. And 5-10 rule means that we tree bet versus other positions 5% and versus late positions 10%. And it's not too far away. I mean, versus UTG, we tree bet 5% to 6%. 4% to 5% on the later one. So it's around 5 plus minus 1. And then versus late positions is 8 to 11. So the rough guideline is 5 to 10, 5-10 rule. But if we want to know about the ranges, then I actually haven't set it up. That's what I'm testing here. And it's a scene that the stream works. So it looks like I solved my... I solved my streaming problems. We could practice it with bucket tools. And what would be the situation where the range might change the most? Let's say one of the bigger ones. Wow! Black blind versus... Oh, it's the same. Oh, never mind. There's... Open range is much more aggressive than sims in other sites. I haven't seen 5 max sims. But the rate is... One thing that I did is I put up running ones PL50 rate, which is... It's 5% rate? Or was it 4.5? I don't remember. But the cap is 5 bit lines. I don't know what rate structure has used. But people often use... Like they might use PL500 because they have a good rate back. But the problem is that on PL50 running once, the cap is still 5 BBs, which is quite a lot. So what I did, that I put the initial rate to 2.5, which indicates 5% rate back, which is around what we will have there. But the cap is still 2.5 BBs. I'm not sure if anyone has run simulations with these rate structures. Because as far as I know, PL50 from chain and this doesn't include any rate back. So the rate is higher. I don't know what the cap is at PokerStars. It's probably lower than on Running Ones. But these are Running One settings. And once again, I made a lot of compromises to fit the three into my system. I had only 128GB of RAM. So this is not perfect. And it's run only to the 1/5 of what's recommended. You can really include preflop results. And to get better preflop results, I should have two or more sizings for post-flop too. So the numbers I have here, these are not probably what solver would play on 5 max PL. If we make a better sim without too much compromises, then the numbers might change. That's not the point. The point here is to compare. And for that purpose, I think it's fine. So give me a position. We don't want to tree bet UTG. So... What about button versus cut-off? 7.7. And then here it's 6.1. So it drops 25%. So that's pretty good situation. So button versus cut-off. And then start to build up the bucket tools. And let's make it... Button versus cut-off. And initial range is 100%. And opponent range is... We have to do two bucket tools. So here, the cut-off pots. And let's copy that to clipboard. And then set it up here. Why it's 0%? Why it's 0%? Guys, help me out. Oh, CSV. Okay, now it should work. Okay. Now I got it to work. And then action range is... He pots. We have the fold. Then we have the crawl. And last one is pot. Alright? Nice. And then what I will do... Let's put this aside. Let's do another one. For this. And NF3 means no fold to tree bets. So then we set up the same way. I hope you can save these ones. Alright. And we have the fold. And we have the crawl. And the last one is pot. Alright, so now we have two bucket tools. Set it up. Oh, I need to trip. Oh, this is hard in Hangover. Yeah, 5 max makes it more aggressive for sure. But I don't think... I think the numbers are reasonable. I mean, 5 max should be a bit more aggressive than 6 max with UTG voted. And those are slightly more aggressive. The numbers make sense. Often that's my rule of thumb that if it makes sense, it's probably close to truth. But if it doesn't make sense, then you have to change something or check what's the problem. Why my webcam is so... Let's raise me up. Alright? So now we can see... Different types of buckets. Alright, it raises calls on 16%. Did we set it right? Button versus cut-off. 16.3 and 6.1. 15.5 and 7.7. Alright? We are probably tree betting all the aces. But let's see if those middle rundowns. Singles or the rundowns. Ah. No. Why it doesn't? Oh. Let's try now. Okay, now we have double suited rundowns. And then here, let's do the same bucket. So now we get two different... Countercodes? I don't think ace-a is low plays. I would say that poker aces is almost 100% tree bet in both. I would assume. We can see. Double suited rundowns. 634, 629, 65. So not a huge difference there. Actually, tree bets more normally. And when there's no fold to tree bet, the rundowns call slightly more, even double suited ones. So I would just assume that it's the lowest one. And I mean, we could go through all the buckets and explore. But the idea is just to have a rough glimpse. Good reason to test my stream. I'm not going to go too far in depth. I have the sims I can do it when I have time. But double suited rundowns, slight difference. So let's change. Let's see singles or the rundowns. Because they are probably... Some... Oh, what happened there? So singles or the rundowns, overall strategy, 4% tree bet, 60%. Not a huge difference. It doesn't tree bet at all, what? Okay. Well, that was a bad bucket. A lot of them, all kinds of kings and queens. But where do we see the difference? Does it show it between buckets? I haven't used the bucket tool this way, so I'm learning here too. So what do we want? Singles or the kings and double suited kings and queens. Where's one pair hands? There, singles or the kings, queens. Double suited kings, queens. Alright? Let's go with these ones. I think we might have a difference here. Oh, I thought it just glimpses all the buckets into one. That's why I did it. One and... the buckets into one. That's why I did it one at a time. Oh boy. Oh, thi- this is smart. People people who made it are smart. Um. Double suited kings, queens. Eleven percent raise. And if there's no fold, it tree bets more. Alright. Whoa, makes sense. Oh, it doesn't make sense. Let's see. Okay, yeah, it makes sense because opening this calling with hands that should fold normally. So we we tree bet double suited kings and queens for value more. Uh not much actually. I mean, double suited kings is sixteen percent fold. I mean sixteen percent tree bet only. From button versus cutoff. Overlap. Where do we? Oh, remove overlaps. Okay. Uh doesn't change much. Singles with the kings is never a tree bet. But then if the opponent doesn't fold, it's really uh I'm I'm surprised that double suited kings and queens tree bet only sixteen percent of times. So I would tree bet that hundred percent of times almost button versus kind of. That's weird. I mean, that's. Really weird. Oh, there's me. Okay, um. If I put here ace ace, does it include all the pocket aces? Does this work work this way? No. Or does it? No. Okay. Uh that that might. Do it. If I did it right. Oh, i- it's nice to have someone who knows. Yeah, opening range is thirty percent. So it's it's a bit wide too. Uh here are the raising. Okay, wow. You were right. When opponent doesn't fold to three bets. Then ten percent of ACs becomes a call, while in normally it's ninety nine percent tree bet. And why is that? That's that's the question I I really. I really don't know. Yeah, fifty or seventy, but. Yeah. Um. What poker aces becomes the four small play here? So we have double suited aces, we have singles with the aces. And do we have any other aces here? Uh we have one pair double suited. So these are different. Double suited kings or the rainbow. Alright. Which one are we slowing? The bad ones or the crude ones? And the rainbow ones, wow. So pretty much we still tree bet all the double suited, singles suited ones, but the rainbow ones become fifty fifty. We've been calling and raising. Um. Because rainbow aces are gonna be in trouble where they are trouble even when opponent doesn't fold it. I mean, they are in trouble when opponent falls to tree bet. Uh let let's see actually here. Let's do the same. Where are they? Double suited ace, singles with the aces. Because now now if we compare that to average six max strategy, it's it's going to fail, so once again, let's compare when in my five max sim. The opponent. Alright, we can see here. If opponent phones with three bets, then pretty much even rainbow ones are tree bet. I I mean, there's eight percent. So virtually we treat with every aces. But when we don't have fold equity. We just call with aces more. I don't get it. I mean, I I'm trying to figure out what is the reason. Uh let let's see what kind of hands it does. Uh. Let's set up the. Only the rainbow ones. Why doesn't it open the hands? Oh. Okay. Oh, we fold quad aces. When you treat with rainbow aces, you're relying on the fold equity. Are we? I always thought we treat with aces for value. But yeah, probably some of the value comes from. Some of the value come from the fold equity for sure. So here are the aces and. Why can't we put them in order? Okay. Okay, now it's filter with probabilities. All the triple A's are call. Oh, but now the bucket is not there. Okay, so we have to do it this way. Okay, sorry. Alright, so all the triple A's are are call. All categories. Uh these are rainbow ones. And if we have only two aces, yeah, it's still forty six, fifty six, so. Now now it's really hard to figure out what's the trend here, what ace is to call, what ace is to tree bet. I mean. I'm trying to see if there's any logic, but I think there is not. So it's pretty much. Flip a coin or make an assumption that if the side cards are somewhat connected, you could tree bet and total crap. You recall, but there are still some hands. That would suit. Like ace with broadway fifty fifty. So it's very mixed strategy. Uh let's. Let's see the same thing. Oh, we didn't slow play singles with the aces. We pretty much tree bet if we have a suit. So that that makes a decent difference that. Rainbow aces i- it's not a huge part of poker aces. And if we just call with half of them. Where does the other difference comes? Uh triple aces uh with the phosphor aces was tree bet ninety something. Singles with the aces is a tree bet ninety four percent of times. So I would assume that triple aces are the six percent most likely. So that doesn't make sense. Uh does anyone have any ideas? What? What creates the difference? Uh what are the buckets? We should go for next. Okay, uh double suited connected ace high. Alright. Let's set up few of these double suited hand. Alright, two, three, four, six, seven, eight. Say nandis, two, three, four, six, seven, eight, boom, boom. Alright. All the numbers, all the numbers, where? Where are the differences? Right? Um the first one is very different. Probably the most different. Oh yeah, double pairs and and check then nine eight. Um. On these buckets, I I would say double suited disconnected ace high broadway, some differences, but the first one is quite interesting. Double suited connected ace high non-broadway. Like I ace nine eight seven type of hands. I- i- it's the first one. As far as I know. Double suited connected ace high non-broadway, which means that ace high with three connected cards, no broadway card. So those are ace nine eight seven, ace eight seven six, eight seven five type of hands. Then when we don't have fold equity. The tree bet drops from thirty uh sixty three to forty six. And calling goes up. So pretty much. Six or three percent. Pretty much it doesn't fold those hand. To make a simplification, we don't fold double suited ace high connected hand, but we don't tree bet those ace nine. Things, so let's see that category. More closely. So category two. Ah. This is probably not the most fast way. Oh, we don't wanna see it. Bad one, sorry. Oh, let's make it here. Probably the probably the alright. So this is when we don't fold. Why does? Oh, sorry. Hard. Okay, now we have the double suited connected ace crap. Alright, where where's the difference? Who can spot the difference? These are all high ones. These are pretty much either double cappers or everything below seven or eight. Wow. Yeah, you're going to tree bet less ace seven, but but the thing is that even with sixty two or sixty three percent tree bet. Then uh we tree bet ace seven eighty percent of times. And let's see what happens here. It's still sixty, so it's well eighty to sixty, so yeah. And I I would say that if we go to the hands with ace six. And now it starts to fold some. Two prod, two prod, two prod. Yeah, on ace seven. How how can you make it so it's ace seven and two small cards? What's the syntax for small card? In proper tools? Does anyone remember? Because I I don't. Too much poker tools you don't have to use. So you remove, but there are checks too. That that's the weird thing is that there shouldn't be any broadway cards. But there are some checks. And even queens, what? So ace seven without queen, check, then nine, eight. Does that work? Or does it have to? Oh, it should work. Yeah. Alright. I got it. I got it. Still have the mojo. So normally very mixed fifty fifty. When opponent doesn't fold seventy five, twenty five simplification. So there comes the difference. So what have we learned today? Do I really need to remember something? Uh we. Do you do I remember right? We tree bet less double suited kings and queens. Or was there a difference? I forgot it already. Oh. Good thing I'm recording it, so. Good thing I'm recording after what's later, what what I told you guys. Yeah, uh that's probably the two bit two bit differences so far is rainbow aces. We don't tree bet them always on micros if opponent doesn't fold on service, which is something that I'm not sure if I agree on. What what do you guys think? Because i- if, ah too bad I don't have my database on on the new computer on poker tracker. So I I need to check later. Uh if anyone of you have a poker tracker uh open there or you could open and you have a lot of hands on micros and you filter your poker aces, the graph should go just straight up. Poker aces makes over half of your money at micros. But it would be interesting to see. Let, let's see, I have my laptop here, the old one. But I don't have the charger, so let's see if there's battery. If there's battery, I can see from my micros database. How much I have made money by tree betting rainbow Aces, cause I, I still have a feeling that. You're making a lot of money with those. Tree betting. Oh, the, the, this is nerdy. I have a fucking five thousand euro computer with three screens and then I'm using laptop to check things. What, what the fuck, it's now downloading? What? It started to download something. I don't know what it did. Uh, okay. I hate touchpad, by the way. And then. And the th- bad thing is that you can't see anything. Not sure if it shows you. Alright. Uh, does this show? Okay, you can see some. Uh, this is the graph for poker Aces from last year on poker stars. And the total number of Aces is two thousand hands, which is decent sample size for poker Aces. And the graph is quite steady, so. You might make an assumption that I'm making money with Aces. But then let's make a filter. Then. It's rainbow. Or I think it's better to exclude. Suits. Any suit there. Alright. Okay, so now it should have all the suited Aces. And not suited, it's alright. I've never done this, so I'm, I'm quite scared, I hope the graph goes up, oh, it does. Fuck me. This is my rainbow Aces. Uh, where do I put it so you can see? Damn, the green screen is. There you can see, now, okay, now it works. So. BB wise. But it's one point seven thousand hands, oh, that can't be right. Oh, that can't be right. Uh, there has to be a problem now, sorry. I'm going to double check. Okay, now it has the suited hands. Oh yeah, those were the suited Aces. Okay, now we have the rainbow ones. Drumroll. Alright. Um. This is not. Alright, well, I stand corrected, these are my rainbow Aces. So very flatlined. And two hundred fifty six rainbow Aces and there's one heater where I win three hundred BP pot. Probably pre-fabolling or I hit the ace. Uh. Outside that one three hundred BP win, I win sixty dollars on piano twenty-five, alright? So over two hundred BP deep win, without that, it's very virtually break even. So, um. I stand corrected. Even on micros, you don't make a lot of money with rainbow Aces. Of course, that's all the positions. Um. How much, we have one hour, um, would be interesting to see. How does it change when we are out of position? Like, do we treat at rainbow Aces from the small blind? Oh, we can see it and then call it the day, or was there a question? Uh, what does this adjustment of having no fold to treat but means the betting frequencies overall? Uh, pre-flop opening ranges are virtually same. Doesn't change actually. Post-flop, no idea. Haven't done any post-flop yet. But, yeah, it affects the post-flop too. But so far, just seeing i- if there's any big pre-flop adjustments over does. But I'm quite surprised that opening ranges are pretty much the same. Where we can open fifty or seventy percent instead of thirty percent. How to make that? I, honestly, I don't know how to force. Someone to open that wide. I have no idea how to set it up. If there's a solver nerd who can tell me, then it would be nice to know how solver adjusts to maniacs. Uh, how did I change the photo three bet frequency? Uh, I removed all the call calls from the tree manually. So, uh, where's my solver? Here, uh, on the tree. Like here, open pot, then comes the three bet. And everyone. Everyone else folds. Then here would be pot caller fold and I just removed the fold option. And then manually did that to all the possible situations. And five max, it, it wasn't that hard, from UTG you have to remove. One, two, three, four different calls and then the squeeze, one, two, three. Wait, okay, I wait. Is there something wrong with that? No, I removed it. I, I just removed the opportunity to fold, I didn't put the category, uh, you can see here. Um, where do we have? Here we have the normal tree and the same situation. You can see that he has a pot, fold and call options here. And I just checked at the fold and pressed delete, which gives me this kind of opportunity. But you want those weak folds to be included in the calling range. Um, they are. I, I don't understand what you mean, here. The UTG has the option to either pot, fold or call. And then on the, another tree, he has only options to pot or call, he cannot fold anything. Yeah, I made them disappear, so now, with every hand he has, he has, solver has to decide whether to call or raise pot. N- none of the hands. Disappear, like ace ten six dews, it opens, it has three bet, yeah, it has to decide. Whether he calls or puts, none of the hands disappear. These are not ranges, these are just options, uh, possible. Options or different game trees. Oh, it will have ace ten six dews in some of his range. If it opens it, if it doesn't open it. Uh, I want them to have ace ten six dews unless ace ten six dews is in the pre-flop opening range. We still assume that opponents open with correct ranges. If it opens ace ten six dews, then the ace ten six dews will be in either calling range or raising range. None of the hands disappear, these are not ranges, these are just possible game trees. So different kinds of situations, what might happen? No, come on. This is game tree, this has nothing to do with ranges. This is just the possible branches, which means possible situations that we might have. This has nothing to do with the ranges so far, these are just opportunities. So no matter what I do here, it doesn't affect the ranges and when I run the simulations, no hands can disappear. This is not range, this is just a game tree. Like. Well, yeah, I, I could remove the pot here, which gave us everyone only chance to call or fold. So that would be. Nineties piano, no one raises anything, but still everyone plays hundred percent of hands. Pre-flop, but they have to decide something. So what, oh, yeah, I was saying that, what about rainbow Aces on the small blind? Uh, I don't think you can increase the percentage of raise first in easily. And I, I'm not sure if you can do it. How, there's probably a way you can do it, but it's going to be really hard, cause what solver is trying to do, it calculates the equilibrium. So the longer the sim runs, the more the percentage change, so if, if I lock someone to open seventy percent. Then. I'm not sure, we might do a post-flop sim where we say that opponent open seventy percent. But then we need to run a pre-flop sim too, where certain position opens seventy percent and then just see how button reacts. Yeah, it's probably node looking, but I'm not sure how it works that easily. Like, here I locked different nodes and I actually have a tree for three BB splash pot, which is now running. Which was quite hard actually. Cause I wanted to make a sim. For three BB splash. And I thought it would be as easy as just start a pre-flop game tree and put three BBs as ante. Yeah, rainbow Aces in the small blind coming up. So I thought that next is put three BB anties on the pot and run, and then I realized that fuck. If we had three BB ante, then the UTG can raise. More. Cause anties are included in the pot, on running ones, splash money is not included into the pot. So I had a problem. How to calculate the opening sizes with the splash money, and I did it. And what I came up is that the pre-flop open for these three positions was certain percentage. To give up seven small blinds open. And then the three bet amount is different percentage. So I have to for certain opening rain, opening sizing and certain three bet sizing for these three positions. But on the blind, it's a bit different, I had to do different sizing for the blinds too. And that's when things get really weird, cause then. If there's a call, then the squeezing size would be different. And if I want to do perfect three BB splash, then it would include sheet loads of different pre-flop raises. Raising ranges and it would be really hard to allocate those certain percentages to certain place. I, I can show you, uh, what I have here, when I calculated it. With the three BB splash, uh, this is pretty much the numbers. For these three positions, raise first in is forty-five percent, three bet is seventy-four percent. And for the blinds, raise first in is forty percent, three bet is sixty-five percent. And that's a compromise. It means that some of the squeezes are a bit too small and so on. But I think it's as close as you can get, if I'm in really more complicated, my two hundred fifty-six gigabytes of RAM is no good. I have to over the button numbers on post-flop. I mean, if you wanna do six max, put pre-flop sims, you need a fucking. Server, you, you cannot do on home machines unless you have chain and a stream machine. I thought two hundred fifty-six would get you. Quite far, but. It, it, it really can't, cause when we have. The splash, we need to add imps too. And then the game tree becomes a lot bigger, it's two and a half the size of this one. But I, I mean, interesting to see how solver approaches macro rate splash pots. But yeah, that's something I'm going to do, so what we, was it, rainbow Aces in small blind. Uh, we don't want these ones. And, uh, that changed here, so it's a small blind and, oh, we actually do need these ones. Uh, this is no fold to three, but so it's this one. Now it's small blind versus cutoff. So. Yep. So here we are on the small blind, this is no fold, alright. Fold. Is here. And then. Crawl. Just see that we are on the right spot. And then last. Small blind raising only five point four. Yeah, mind be do the rate. And then we have. The other one. Small blind. It's most these ones, and. And we see the overall strategy, it's just going to. Just going to see. Then we are on. God damn it, there's one. And there's two. Right? So the overall strategy is. Call six, raise five when not falling into three bets. Call four, raise seven, when there is a fold to three bets, so small blind raise really high versus cutoff. Should we change it? How much it three bets versus button? Nine and seven, okay, let's, let's do that one. Let's do. Let's do that one, so we will have a bit wider ranges. Because otherwise, it would just suck. Uh this is the no fold. And there's the button opening range. Yep. And then the normal. And then we need to change, oh boy. Okay, let's do it. This is a fold. Just see me getting tired. No, no, no. Oh. Are you happy now? Oh, there's something wrong here. Why did I mess up? Because these looks. This is correct. Hello Razam, we are fucking things up. So this is right, small blind versus button. But here, something doesn't add up the fold range. I think there was a problem in this one. Why is it zero percent? Okay, now it's more. Right, and then we want the filter to be rainbow aces. Oh boy. What? This is the overall strategy, oh. Ah, my head hurts. So uh there is a difference. After all this, it, that was fucking fifteen minutes. So normally, in five max, my my sim. Uh from the small blind versus button open, we treat at seventy percent of rainbow aces. But if the button doesn't fall to three bet, which is probably very accurate, even on P L twenty five on most tables for versus a lot of P L fifty pairs even. You can see that we treat at only one third of rainbow aces. And if we don't I mean like triple aces is probably fold always. So we don't actually ever fold ace ace with two side cards. That's that's nice to know. So only triple aces are a fold. But with those two aces. Normally we treat at seventy three percent of our rainbow aces, which are not triple of what robo aces. So just two aces and something, we treat at pretty much everything but the super crappy ones. But then when we get to the no fold to three bets, it's only forty percent three bets, so there's a huge difference. And I would probably assume that if we take, where was the deposit at ace high non broadway connector? Ace high non broadway, it was that one. Oh, that's single so there, there it is, category number two. And then we do the same here. I think we have the same trend here. But not that high. We actually fold twenty five percent of the, wow, very mixed. Our normal, normal strategy, twenty five, twenty five fifty, to make it simple. We run in a little. So three bet half of those on the small blind. But this is very mixed, like ace eight five three is a fold, ace eight seven four is a crawl. And then ace eight seven five becomes a three bet. So very mixed strategy. And then if the button doesn't fold to three, but it doesn't change that much, we fold the same crappy hands and just call slightly more. So out of position, this doubled today's high hand doesn't really change. And then the last one where we saw differences was those double suited kings and queens. Where are they? Double suited kings and queens thirty seven. So let's see this one. So double suited kings and queens no difference actually. From the small blind, we treat at most of them. Crawl some and fold some, uh just not fold. Three bet everything but the most crappy ones. Even if an open doesn't fold to three bets, three bet everything but the crappy ones. That's the same. So what was the overall difference? Small blind versus button three bets nine point six. And then three bets seven point nine. So that's one point seven percent difference. And from aces, it's still, well. The difference might be on those pocket tens, pocket jacks. Let's do that one and then I'm out. My head starts to hurt. Double suited jack, jack, ten, ten. And single so there. Let's see these ones. Wow. No difference. Oh, there is some difference. Double suited jacks, tens, thirty, thirty, thirty. But so when opponent doesn't fold to three bet, it changes normally three bet thirty five percent, double suited jacks and tens. When opponent doesn't fold, you take away the crappiest one and put them into your calling range pretty much. But not a huge difference there. Double bears. Oh, that might be actually good one. Let's do that one. Oh. One and a half hours already, god damn it. Connected disconnected. Single so it there. I have to say that I haven't used this bucket tool this much, because I haven't had any sims to run with or just check some pre-flop trainings and everything, but I can say that like now when I have two different sims that I want to compare, I have to say that this bucket tool is one hell of a program. I mean, to do the same work with Monks over here. Then that would take ages. So I I have to say that this software is pretty damn, pretty damn good to explore things. Oh boy. Uh what do we have here? Normal strategy first. Single suited disconnected double pairs is a hundred percent fold. Oh, fuck you solver. It's a three bet. Yeah, when the button doesn't fold, uh let's do, and we put these both on the same. So uh you can see here that uh rainbow connected double pairs. Fifty fifty normally, now it's almost sixty forty, so it falls a bit more, doesn't three bet the lowest ones. Small difference there. Um thing is that single suited connect connected double pairs is a three bet a bit more. When button doesn't fold to three bets, which is weird. I would probably estimate that it three bets more, it it includes all the ace, king, queens and so on. And it three bets double suited connected double pairs. Yeah, double suited connected double pairs is always three bet. And I would say that this difference here, most likely that three bets fifty percent, normally only forty one, is that it three bets more king, queens out of position. Bit more, maybe some jack stands, who knows? And double suited disconnect there is thirty three, thirty three, thirty four, pretty much the same. Not difference in in real life. Button call three bet. Uh what? On the top one, button never folds. On the bottom, button folds. Let's see how much he actually folds. This is no fold, so we want to see here. Actually fold only sixteen or seventeen percent. So doesn't fold often. That's why the difference is not huge. He's there. U D C folds twenty percent. So no one folds a lot. When it sees five max, it's it's a bit weird. Yeah. No one folds over fifty percent on on my sim. But there's some folding with it, and when we take it away. Any pairs excluded. Oh, what? These are double pairs and I and I don't know what all my fucking god high stakes database says. I don't know what any pairs excluded. Where does that relate to? But um out of all this work, the bottom line is that you actually don't adjust that much when opponents don't fold to three bets. I'm I'm surprised that the adjustment is not bitter. There are some hands, like rainbow aces was the one, huge difference. And then those double suited connected ace high non broadway hands. In heads up solver excludes double paired hands with pair of duces. What? Oh, the, I don't have any of those excluded. You you could exclude, but yeah, they should have only double paired hands. I mean, you can set it to exclude what you want. I'm not sure about chain and this filters we could. Uh we could, we could, we could. Just put here and buttons to filter. And we do have produce it here, for sure. Oh, seven, seven, two, two double suited is a fold. No way. So we have three, three duces. It has all the double pairs. But why there aren't? Oh, it doesn't have any broadway pairs in here. Oh, that that's a new one. So yeah, because ace, king, queen, jacks and tens is already on on another bucket. So actually this bucket is only to nine high pocket pairs, which makes it a bit interesting. And now I closed already then. Well, wasn't huge. So biggest difference is is that if opponent doesn't fold to three bets, then you shouldn't three bet all your rainbow aces and you should call a bit more with double suited ace high non broadway rundown. Which is actually something that I've been doing before this, because I always found out that i- it's hard to three bet ace eight, eight, seven, five double suited when opponent always calls you and you you rarely hit super strong on the flop. So I've actually been implementing that strategy a little by accident. But it's nice to see what solver thinks. And you could play with this. I mean, you could make different sims compare. You could put a lot of work. Too bad I have to go to work. In in real life, would be nice to just run these things every day. And I'm 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 happy, or I'm anxious to see what splash the pot strategy is for solver, assuming I get the sim done right. Uh I actually need to do, to compare, I need to run my pre-flop five max again to keep it limps. And then change the settings so it matches the splash the pot simulation. And if it takes one week to run one, then I will have some results in two or three weeks. And if it takes one week to run one, then I will have some results in two or three weeks. Damn, might be even more. Because I have to use the computer, I just kind of run it twenty four seven. But that's how it is. But as as soon as we see how solver reacts to three BB dead money, we can start to make more assumptions and it hasn't run for long, but U D C starts to lean actually quite a lot when there's three BB dead money. So the V P I Ps are going through the roof because it's probably profitable for everyone to join the hand because there's dead money. And then when I do for ten BB splash, it's interesting to see what happens preflop, yet along some postlop stuff. Alright, but I cut what I wanted. I saw that the stream is working, no, oh, there's some drop frames, but not too much. Connection is stable, no one has reported any problems. Uh what about the microphone? Um i- is this better than the headset or worse? Or the same? Anyone? Please type your answer. Fuck. Did my chat just die? Do I do I really need to test it? It's working? So probably then everyone just left. Because no one is saying anything. Well, screw you guys, I can check it on the video. Anyway, stream works here. Not here, I need your answer. Is this microphone better than my headset or is it the same or worse? Yeah, uh let's continue with the solver stuff when I get when when I get more results and then we can make assumptions. And it might be that in the end, all of the assumptions are quite no prainer. But at least we have some more proof than just random opinions. Alright, thanks and probably we'll be streaming more on the weekend and next week. Uh trying to figure out new layout, have to set up all the stream stuff for the new computer. This is this is not what I want it to be, so. I will see you on the weekend or then after that. Probably next stream will be the hand review for the home games, uh streamer home games. Wild games, Running Bad, seat setups and so on. But we will do the notorious hand review. Alright, thank you, have a great weekend. I probably won't see you before that one, so see you later, bye bye.